All rise. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday evening, October 20th, 2025. This meeting is being recorded. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have seventeen items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the City Clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, October 6th, 2025.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the minutes.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Oppose, the minutes are filed, the vote is ten-zero. Agenda item number two.
Minutes of the Joint Convention, October 6th, 2025.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the minutes of the Joint Convention.
Motion is made in second to accept and place on file the minutes of the Joint Convention. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're not adjourned yet, so I may offer my appreciation to all the applicants that applied for this position. We had some excellent qualified applicants. I was trying to make that statement at the meeting, but indeed, we were adjourning, so I'm making it now. Thank you.
On the motion to accept and place on file, all those in favor, oppose, the minutes are filed, and the vote is ten-zero. Agenda item number three.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition of Massachusetts Electric at Verizon to install one joint-owned pole on Beach Street, beginning at a point approximately fifteen feet west of the center light of the intersection of Beach Street and Cloverhill Street. National Grid is proposing to install a push brace off Pole 21 on Beach Street. Order number twenty-five dash one hundred nine five six seven. And in addition, we have a communication from City Engineer Thomas DePurcio regarding recommended conditions for the petition of Mass Electric at Verizon.
Okay, this is a public hearing taken up in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And finally, questions from the City Council. Those speaking in either favor, public or questions or opposition will have a three-minute allotment after the applicant presents the application to the public. With that, please state your name and address to the clerk, please.
Yeah, my name is John Rupia. I'm from National Grid, Hovdell. And I'm here for the petition of this, this pole at the junction of Beach and Clover Street, Pole Number Twenty-one. We're gonna, we are suggesting to put a push brace just to support the pole. Any objections?
Go, Sata.
Yeah, Mo, sir. No.
All right. Anyone else in the public speaking in favor? Anyone else in the public speaking in favor? Anyone else in the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public. Any questions from the public? Questions from the public. Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Excuse me. Hearing none, I close that portion of the public. Questions from the City Councilors. Counselor Preciado.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being here.
Yes.
I just had one question. The tree that is at the cemetery, I saw in that picture, looks like it might be right next to the pole abutting it. Are you, do you guys have plans to remove that tree?
Not at the moment.
Okay. That's all I needed. That's all I wanted, no? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Preciado. Any other questions from the City Councilors? Questions from the City Councilors? Any questions from the City Councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Counselor Pacillo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve with the conditions submitted by the City Engineer.
Motion made in second to approve the petition with the conditions submitted by the City Engineer. That motion's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oppose. So the petition is approved with the conditions by the City Engineer, and the vote is ten-zero. John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number four. Counselor Roby.
The applicant is still upstairs. I would entertain a motion to move Agenda Items Number Four and Five a little bit later in the agenda until the applicant comes down from the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would agree if we can move Four and Five down to when the applicant gets here from the planning board. It would be appreciated.
Motion is made in second to move Agenda Items Four and Five till later in the meeting till the applicant arrives. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oppose. Motion carries. We'll move Four and Five till later in the agenda. Agenda item number six.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of forty thousand dollars from the National Traffic, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. Orders to the Police Department to support targeted traffic enforcement initiatives.
Counselor Irish.
May I, Mr. President, motion to approve the grant, please?
Motion made in second to approve the grant. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would, first of all, want to thank the Executive Office of Public Safety. Our roads, as we all know, if we haven't noticed it lately, are getting very congested, and the more traffic enforcement we can have to calm it down a little bit will be very appreciated. I know I've had tailgaters on my car, and I'm getting to the point where I felt the same, that we need more traffic enforcement. So this is a great opportunity from this grant. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Orem. Any other comments on the motion to approve the grant? Seeing none, on the motion to approve, all those in favor, oppose. The grant is approved, and the vote is ten-zero. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed lease agreement with the South Middle Sector Opportunity Council for space at the Walker Building.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to send this item to the Legislative and Legal Committee.
Motion made in second to send this item to the Legislative and Legal Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oppose. Motion carries. This is going to L and L, and the vote is ten-zero. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding application for modification of special permit from Rafael Orinov on behalf of Green Gold Group, Inc., to amend the hours of operation at the marijuana establishment located at 910 Boston Post Road East within the Wayside District in proper legal form. Order number twenty-five dash one hundred nine four nine seven B.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor and move the special permit language to number seventeen.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the communication and move this item down to Agenda Item Seventeen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oppose. Motion carries. This is going to be filed and moved down to Agenda Item Seventeen, and the vote is ten-zero. Agenda item nine.
Communication from Building Commissioner William Payton regarding request for approval of a mass sign plan for 910 Boston Post Road East to include, to include an internally illuminated pylon sign located within the Wayside District.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer this to Urban Affairs.
Motion is made in second to refer this item to Urban Affairs. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oppose. This item's going to Urban Affairs, and the vote is ten-zero. Agenda item number ten.
Communication from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Taj Estates of Marlboro LLC regarding request to purchase stair, city stair land adjacent to the proposed mixed-use project at one six three to one seventy-five Main Street.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer this to Urban Affairs and Housing.
Motion made in second to further this item to Urban Affairs Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oppose. This item's going to Urban, and the vote is ten-zero. Agenda item number eleven.
Application for adjunct deal, second-hand dealer license by Matthew McDonald, Purlong, DBA Eco ATM LLC at two forty East Main Street.
Counselor Pacillo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to the Public Services Committee.
Motion is made in second to further this item to the Public Services Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oppose. Motion carries. This is going to public service, and the vote is ten-zero. Agenda item number twelve.
Communication from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Banks regarding notification of public comment period on the license application of Juma Financial LLC, DBA Juma Grocery and Check Services to operate a check cashing business at 910 Boston Post Road East, Suite One Thirty.
What is the pleasure of the City Council? This is your opportunity to weigh in. Especially Councilman Vitale and Doucette, this is in your ward. Any thoughts or comments? The Division of Banks is looking for the, whether or not the city has any comments on the application.
Yes, Mr. President. I, I read the, I read the review of, from our Commissioner, Police Commissioner, and the sister organization of this organization, if you will, had very little fraudulent, they had some checks that were cashed, forgeries on, on checks, but it wasn't that many. He didn't think that any type of practice was their, their fault. So it looks like the organization will be fine, according to our police commissioner.
Okay, so is this recommendation, we send a, we have no comment letter to the Division of Banks?
No comment.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, Counselor Doucette.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to submit a letter of no comment to the commission.
Motion is made in second to have the President send a letter to the Division of Banks saying we have no comment on the application. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oppose. The vote carries ten-zero. I will draft a letter before October thirty-first telling the Division of Banks that the City Council has no issues with the petition to have a check cashing facility at 910 Boston Post Road East. The vote carries ten-zero. Agenda item thirteen.
Communication from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of FD one thirty Lazott LLC regarding request to extend time limitations to December seventeenth, twenty twenty-five PM on the application for a special permit for the Glen Ford at Lake Williams Condominium Community to be in the Lazott Drive, Oval A District. Order number twenty-five dash one hundred nine four eight three B.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we did extend the time once on this back in September. Obviously, they're having some issues with a lot of other special permits and have requested extension on several of them. So I'm going to move to approve the extension for one thirty Lazott until December seventeenth at ten PM, which puts a couple of days past our City Council meeting, giving everybody time to do what's needed if it's voted on that night.
Motion made in second to extend the date for the special permit application to December seventeenth. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oppose. The motion to extend the special permit to December seventeenth is approved, and the vote is ten-zero. Agenda item fourteen.
Application for a special permit from Lifestyle Fit LLC, DBA FRVR Athletics for proposed gym for physical fitness classes, team strength and performance training, fitness education, nutrition education and training, and the sale of related fitness clothing and merchandise to be in an existing building at two fourteen Cedar Hill Street.
Counselor Roby.
We'll see how successful they are. Move to refer this to Urban Affairs. Set a public hearing for November seventeenth and to advertise.
Motion made in second to further this item to the Urban Affairs Committee. We'll set a public hearing for November seventeenth and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oppose. The item carries. It's going to Urban Affairs. Can have a public hearing on November seventeenth and advertise, and the vote is ten-zero. We see the applicant is here. Has he caught his breath?
I have.
You have. Counselor Roby, you okay with going back to Agenda Item Number Four? Mr. Clerk, can you read Agenda Item Number Four?
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application to amend a special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Taj Estates of Marlboro LLC for a mixed-use project in the Marlboro Village District consisting of sixty-seven residential, residential condominium units, street-level commercial space, sixty-one onsite parking spaces, and residential amenities at one sixty-three to one seventy-five Main Street. Order number twenty-five dash one hundred nine five five four.
Okay, this public hearing we're taking up in the same four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And finally, questions from the City Council. Again, comments will be limited to three minutes. With that, please state your name and address to the record. We'll open the first part of the public hearing. The public speaking in favor.
Thank you, President Austin. Counselors, Attorney Brian Falk with Myrick, one hundred Front Street in Worcester, here on behalf of the applicant, Taj Estates of Marlboro LLC. With me from Taj Estates is Mirage Ahmed, and Taj Estates, so you know, is based in Westbro. Also with me is our designer, Carlos Ferreira, from MP Design Consultants, which has an office in Southbro. As was mentioned, we're here seeking amendments to a special permit and site plan approval that was issued in 2019 for what was known as the E-on-Main Mixed-Use Project, one sixty-three Main Street. Due to two separate permit extension statutes that were passed during COVID and then at the end of last year, these two permits from twenty sixteen, twenty nineteen remain actionable and subject to the Marlboro Village zoning provisions before they were amended in 2023. We have until January twelfth, 2026, but for those permits will lapse and no longer be actionable. So the amendments we're proposing would make the project feasible for construction and hopefully fix a giant eyesore on Main Street. So we're looking for a short turnaround with that January twelfth construction deadline in mind, and we appreciate the Council's support in that endeavor. So moving ahead, this is the current site. I have to say, I almost didn't want to include this photo in the slide deck because it really pains me to look at it. After receiving permits in 2019, there was some initial demo work on the site in early 2020, and that was it. The current owner and former developer was not able to advance the project, and this is what we've been looking at for the last six years. And this is what Taj plans to build, a modified version of that project. The project will fill the gap on Main Street with retail space and a residential front door. Carlos here looked at the 2019 project and came up with several changes to make the project more feasible from a constructive, construction standpoint. The primary consideration is working with the site's existing slopes and avoiding doing structural work in the hill behind the property. He also eliminated several building areas that were spaces that just wouldn't generate revenue and made the construction feasibility difficult. So here's a basic comparison of what we're looking to amend from 2019 plan to 2025. We still keep sixty-seven residential units over seven floors. It's a mix of thirty-one two-bedrooms and then thirty-six one-bedroom and studios. We're going to be increasing onsite parking from forty-three spaces to sixty-one, and that's would be just five short of what's required under zoning in this district, under the old zoning. And we do this by splitting the parking between ground-level parking and then parking on the second floor. We'll keep the street-level retail, but instead of two smaller units, we're going to have one single unit, three thousand square feet, which is just a little bit more than the commercial space in the prior project. And we'll be removing the top-floor roof deck, replacing it with units. The roof deck was actually something that was somewhat controversial and raised some concerns with neighbors and councilors last time around in terms of what noise might be generated. We have a number of permit conditions in, from the 2019 set of permits, addressing activity level on the roof deck. That's all gone. We won't have a roof deck. There'll be some private patios that are unique to units, but not an open gathering space for lots of folks on the roof. And then that, because of those changes, we bring the total height down from eighty-one feet to seventy-five feet. So we reduce the, the height by a bit. And we also keep the surplus of what's required as private open space under the zoning. If you take away the roof deck, we actually are providing a little bit more non-roof-deck private open space with this proposal, mainly in the form of a flat lawn area to the rear of the property. And this slide here shows you the rear. Again, the top, that's the 2019 version, and then the bottom, that's our current version. That, that lawn area would be available for our residents to get outside. As an urban-style community, we expect that residents will be primarily younger professionals. As a result, we expect the cities, the use of city services will be pretty minimal, in particular, school services, which would be probably close to zero. And that leads us to an estimated projection of a positive tax revenue to the city of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars per year. That's when you take away expected city services, that's the net gain to the city in tax revenue. But that's just the dollars that are coming into City Hall. We're looking at economic benefits to the city, turning this eyesore into something that everyone can be proud of, will be difficult to measure. The main amenity of this building is Main Street itself. We're looking to add anywhere from sixty-seven to ninety new residents who can walk to all the businesses and services downtown. These are going to be customers to support Wellies, to support Pico, Washu, other downtown businesses. businesses, and they never have to use their car to go to those places. Getting a little bit into the design details, this is the front of the building. You can see on the top there, the private open space on the seventh floor in place of a roof deck. Again, that's not a roof deck, those are individual balconies for the units towards the top. You can also see the redesigned city staircase on the right side that leads up to Devon Street. This is our ground floor layout, so you see, I can see it from here. So right in the middle, we have our lobby. Just to the right is the commercial space, 3,000 square feet. Just, on, on the far left, we have our ground-level parking, that's 17 spaces accessible right from a garage off of Main Street. And then in between that garage and the lobby is a bike parking area for 22, indoor bike parking for 22 bicycles for the residents. This is our first floor. This is the all-parking first floor. 47 spaces on this floor. Both the, so in the top right is the, at the, at the first floor level, or second floor level, I should say, there'll be an electronic gate both there and then towards the bottom of the ramp leading to Main Street. So electronic gating systems that folks are able to enter and exit without conflict. This is not public parking. This is resident-only parking. So the folks using this electronic gating system are going to be the residents, people that use it all the time. This isn't something that members of the public are going to have to learn how to use. This is for residents only. They'll have access to it and control over it. This shows you the building with respect to the green space to the back. Again, this is a larger green area and a much flatter green area, actually useful. The prior version had landscaping on that slope, but it was primarily, you know, landscaping, decorative green space. It wasn't usable as recreational space as this would be. This shows you all seven of our levels. So on the bottom right is the, the ground level with the retail and the first portion of parking, and then we work our way this way, all the way to the, on the very top right is the seventh floor. This shows you just our five residential-only levels, the different colors, so the pinkish orangish color, I can't tell what it is, one of those. That's the two, those are the two-bedroom. The lighter green are the one-bedroom, and then the dark green are the studios. This shows you a height comparison, a little difficult to read, but the top is the 2019 version with the roof deck, and the bottom is our version, 75 feet versus 81 feet. We're coming down six feet. This shows you the, between 2019 and 2025, a cross-section. So on the top is the 2019 version, you may be able to make out, we've got massive pins going into the, the hillside as structural support for the building, because we didn't just go to where it's open, they kept pushing and pushing, and then used the hillside for structural support. If that sounds expensive, it is expensive. That's part of the reason things haven't been going forward with the project. So on the bottom, you can see our design taking advantage of what's already there. There were buildings there before that had, that had cellars. We're using those areas. We're not going further into the hillside. We're going right up to where the old buildings were before. There'll be a retaining wall and some landscaping on that hillside to make it look a lot better for the residents, but it's not going to be providing structural support for our building, which is a, which is a big step in the right direction. So back to our streetscape view. I think you can tell Carlos and his team spent a lot of time to think through how to make this project better. I think they did a good job of taking what was good about the former project, which was sort of a urban-centric downtown-type building, but also they took, I mean, I think you can tell there, they took a look at the neighbors. This, this fits in well with downtown, we think, and, and matches existing buildings that are there. So in terms of our permitting here with the council, council is both special permit-granting authority and site plan review authority in the Village District. So we're here to amend both of those permits. The special permit addresses going over the maximum height, which is 70 feet unless you get a special permit, and so we're looking to go to 75 feet. There's a special permit provision for rear lot line setback. A portion of our stair area is at a zero lot line, so we need special permit relief for that. And then, if you really want to get into the weeds, there's a little piece of this that's still zone business, 98 square feet, that got left over because the maps were done wrong. We need a special permit to extend into that area. So those were items of relief that were asked for in 2019 that we're also asking for again here. And then the site plan approval handles all the other details, the, the payment in lieu of parking for the five spaces that we're not providing onsite, and a number of other technical details in terms of how the stairway is going to get designed and approved and other aspects of, of the site. I'll be providing drafts of the special permit and site plan approval decision as soon as I possibly can, so we can get going on review. Before I was even brought onboard with this project, Carlos had been meeting with city department heads to get them up to speed, because obviously it's been a while. And so he was meeting with city officials. We've now met with the Site Plan Review Committee informally at their last two meetings. I expect we'll be at every one of their meetings until the end of this year to go over the details and, and properly advise the council. Separately, we filed a request to purchase a portion of the city stair property. That was part of the permits in 2019, and we do still need that, partially for building area and also to relocate the stairs. Stairs would remain city property, just in a different configuration and rebuilt to, to modern standards. You can tell we're moving fast, but it's because we got this January 12th deadline. After January 12th, the, the permits are gone, and we're starting over. And quite honestly, I think we might be looking at what we saw on that second slide for quite a bit longer if we pass this up. I will say, from my perspective, since the original developer stalled on the project, I've been approached by many potential buyers and developers who have looked at this. And I know the city has probably seen even more, in particular, MEDC, have had a lot of suitors come their way. Every one of them walked. What you have here, Carlos and Taj Estates and, and their team, I think is the last best option to get this project underway, and I think they put a lot of thought into this in a very short period of time to try to make that happen. So we're excited about this. I think it's a great opportunity, and we look forward to working with the city as we move towards January 12th. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Falk. Steve Clark, you've got a couple of communications you want to read?
I, well, I have one for public in favor. We received, the city council received a letter from the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce, Michelle Mercer, the CEO and President, in support of the project, sir.
Okay, any other members of the public speaking in favor? If you want to step up to the microphone in the back here and name an address would be perfect. And again, we're limiting speeches, comments to three minutes.
Hi, is this on? My name is Anthony Lawrence, and I own 179 Main Street, which abuts this property, and I would like to speak in favor of this project.
Thanks, Tony.
Good evening, all. My name is Luis Tomas Acosta. I'm a business owner here in, in the city of Marlboro. My business service, Other Business. I'm also part of the Board of Director of the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce, and I'm speaking in favor of this project for the reasons that are already mentioned by the, by the proponent of the project, and I, I urge the council to, to consider that because it's a, it's a unique opportunity for us to pursue what we are all looking for, which is the development of downtown Marlboro. So this is a project that is much more friendly to all the goals that this body put in place, and we found someone that is able and available and willing to build it. So I strongly recommend the approval of this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Luis. Any other members of the public speaking in favor?
Hi, Andrea Payon, 12 Barrett Road, Lexington, Mass. I work for the Davis Companies, west side of Marlboro. I've been working in Marlboro for 37 years, seen a lot of changes come and go with this city, but I think this project I'm really excited about. It's been a tough thing to find the right project for that spot. We've seen a lot of things come and go, and this group really seems to have done a good job. They didn't try to full the exact, every inch of the space. They've made it a little bit smaller on sides. I think they were very thoughtful of adding the parking, was been, was a huge conversation for folks in the past, so I was really excited to see how much more parking they're putting into the project. So again, it feels right, and I know the timing is tough, but I think that's why it's so important for us to make a decision that supports this at this point, because or else it's kind of back to the drawing board, and if things do get a little bit tougher after that with the changes to the Village District. So in support of this project, I think it looks great.
Thank you, Andrea.
Hello, my name's Andrew Trumbo. I'm at 169 Beach Street, and I'm here in support of this project. I know it doesn't meet all of my goals for what I would hope for a project at this site. It's definitely better than what we currently have there, and I, I wouldn't want that to continue to drag out for any longer than it needs to, given the fact that this has been in the works for years at this point, and we haven't gotten much use out of that space since then. So I support this. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? You got to come up, state your name and address. Yes, you do.
Not good at this.
It's okay.
My name is Dolores Priest, and I live on Granger Boulevard, and I have lots of concerns about this. Number one, I don't like the looks of the building. It's too big. It doesn't conform to a small town, which is what I thought Marlboro was, but my, my, one of my concerns is traffic. Traffic is horrible now, and when those two buildings that are being built now, when all that is occupied, where is all this traffic going? You can't, I can't even get out of my condo on Granger Boulevard now. I don't know what it's going to be like when you have all that. Parking's another issue. I have lots of issues. Parking's another issue. You said, I don't know, he said that the public cannot park in their parking lot, their parking garage. However, they can park in our parking garage, which limits, you know, us taxpayers to park in that, because now some of those people are going to be parking in there? I mean, okay. Schools, he said, you can't guarantee that there aren't going to be children in those places. You just cannot guarantee it. What are we going to do? We have this building across from Wemmy's. We have this one where the funeral home was. We have that big thing on, on Route 20. We have the condos near the, the Greek church. We have the place on Link. Where are all these kids going? Where are they going to go to school? I mean, I don't have, I, I have grandchildren in the school system here, but where are they going to go? Police? Do we have enough police to police all of this stuff? What about fire? I mean, if there's two fires or three fires in town, and then a fourth one starts, then what? Then what do we do? One of my questions, though, is what about low income? Are there going to be some low-income housing in there?
There would not be affordable units in this.
I can't, I can't hear, I'm sorry, I can't.
Sure. In the, in the Marlboro Village District, the affordability requirements do not apply. So these would be all market-rate properties.
And like, would veterans at least get a step up? I mean, would they be, you know, considered first, a veteran, if he wants to? Are you laughing? I don't, this is hard for me. But anyway, my biggest concern is the traffic. When I could get, come down Granger Boulevard, and my, one of my granddaughters goes to Asabet, and I take a left onto 85, sometimes I cannot take that left because there are a line of cars, because there's no right turn, that, the right turn just kind of disappeared. So you have all these cars sitting, and I'm just trying to go to pick my granddaughter up at school. I mean, traffic is a big issue, and it's going to be a bigger issue. And parking? I don't know. That's my piece.
Thank you, Dolores. Anyone else with questions for the applicant? Anyone else with questions for the applicant? Anyone else with questions for the applicant?
I think I've got some questions, so hi, everyone.
Name and address.
Yep, hi, everyone. My name is Holly Kazdorff. I live at 47 C Curtis Ave. I actually live in an apartment that, or, sorry, I live in a condo that is actually like, you know, got a good amount of space. I can't imagine, like, yeah, my, I and a lot of people came here because we can't imagine that this is going to be good for the community. It's not going to be good for the culture. It's like, you keep calling that, that parking, that, that spot an eyesore. I, I kind of like looking at it. I like that, those stairs that go up. I find a lot of charm in that. I, you know, of course, I'm not a public speaker, so I'm, you know, you come up with 100 things to say, and then you come out here, and it is more difficult to articulate, but I'm, what I'm trying to say is, all these, all these people, they got parking spots in there, right? But when I'm driving to work on Route 20, they're not, they're going to be out of their parking spots, and they're going to be out on the road, just clogging it up more. And that 40K extra, I don't know how that 40K extra budget to the cops is going to make that traffic any smoother. Like, why, like, if, if we're so, like, where's the public transportation? You know, I, I think I'd be a lot more in favor of this if, if it was coupled with just some sort of support for people to get from point A to B without having to haul their, their big, people got big SUVs, they got big pickups, and they parked them in these tiny little spots, and they take up so much space on the road. And, you know, I'm, I came out here because, because I love the, I love the culture here. I love the people here. I find it to be a, a real nice wholesome community, and I don't see that being fostered when we've got a bunch of, like, when we got all these crammed apartments, crammed roads, and, you know, it's just a stressor just to be out and about. And, and these, so I wasn't sure, I came up for a question because I wasn't sure if I'd have a chance to speak. This is my first city council meeting. I was not sure if I would have a chance to speak my concerns about this as a citizen, as a taxpayer, as someone who is like, like you all mentioned earlier, you know, my husband and I, we don't have kids, so we're just, we're just paying for your old schools, you know? So I'm all, I think that's a, I think that's a cool, like, kind of hook you got there, but I just don't, like, I, I don't see that being like, I don't, you know, this, this just doesn't, like, if you put yourselves in the shoes of a normal working-class person who, who goes to work and comes home every single day, and you're out for 40 hours working, you're on the road for two-plus hours, how can you imagine that most people would be okay with this? We've already got so many other apartments being built. You all see them. They're taking forever to be built, and like, I just don't understand how most of the town can be on board with this. I actually, I don't believe most of the town. This looks like a pretty full room. I don't imagine it's this full usually. So I guess my question is, why aren't we, why aren't we supporting, with more people coming in and our limited road space, why aren't we supporting more public transportation? Something more for working-class people to get around without clogging the roads up more?
Thanks, Holly, and you did a good job public speaking. Any other members of the public with questions? Any other members of the public with questions? Any other members of the public with questions? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors. Counselor Doucette.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I know there's a lot of voice concerns by the citizens, and I respect that. One of the points that was brought up is, you got 67 units and 61 parking lots. How is that divided out?
So it will be, probably be first come, first served, I would imagine, but it may be hard to believe, not everyone here is probably going to have a car. You know, we, we will have to, as a zoning matter, buy five spaces. It's, you know, we're not acquiring any spaces, we're just making a payment for the five that we're not providing onsite. But with a shortage of just five from what zoning requires, it's possible that we don't send many cars, if any, to the garages nearby. And we're pretty close to what zoning requires, and that's, you know, it's 0.75 spaces for all the one and two, all the studio and one bedroom, and then one and a quarter for every two-bedroom, which is what the council put in the, in the zoning in terms of what they thought would be the correct parking, you know, ratio for this kind of a downtown project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Doucette. Counselor Naven. Okay, so, so again, you councilors know, into the microphone with some authority, right? Don't be sheepish. Speak. People want to hear you. Thank you very much for the comment. Counselor Naven. Council Naven.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, appreciate the presentation. I just wanted a clarification, I'm looking through the, from the previously approved building. There are two garage doors. I understand that there's, the garage on the, the garage door on the left side is for the additional parking?
I'm just gonna get, if you, through the.
Just walk me through, because now there's four garage doors on the front versus the two.
You're going back.
I'm just trying to figure out how that works.
Yep. Well, I'll keep going.
One more, Dom.
There we are, okay. So, this is our ground floor. So, you'll see on the far left, there's the aisle going back into those parking spaces. That's one garage door. And then, on the, on the right side, towards the far right, you can see, maybe Carlos can point it out, there's another, another two garage doors, one for in and one for out, on the ramp that will lead up to the second-floor garage. So, there'll be, there will be three garage doors for the two entrances, we just have two doors for the two lanes for the ramp.
And then to the, the door to the far right, if you're looking at the building, that looks like another garage door?
It's, it's not a garage door.
Right, there's that one and then on the right, there's three there.
Council Dusset.
So, that's a utility area. So, that's where the water service, electric service, all that would be done right there. So, it's accessible off of Main Street rather than trying to bury it in the back of the building.
Okay. Appreciate that. And then, I look forward to this coming to urban, be, looking forward to a conversation about the, the difference, there are the trade-offs between the additional parking, the utility room, and then retail space. I understand that going from two to one, but still maintaining more retail space is great, but I'd like to have a little bit of a conversation about what that does for kind of that part of Main Street where we obviously are looking for additional retail space as well. So, appreciate the extra parking, but kinda would like to have a further conversation about that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Naven. Council Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, could you put it back to the place, to the slide that talked about potential tax revenue?
Sure. If I can find it. Here we are.
Here we are. So, 100, if everything works out the way the numbers are, 185,000, that pretty much equals one new teacher, one new firefighter, and one new police officer. Thereabouts? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Vidal. Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Attorney Falk. I welcome the building height decrease from 81 to 75 because I was one that did not support that increase. My question is, when, when the owner has purchased this lot, was it considered using the similar architectural design of the front of the building? I understand you're not going the height. I didn't know if that was still a possibility, that you could still, you know, weave in some of the other architectural design from the previous project from 2019.
So, Council Irish, so, up on the screen now, the top is 2019 and the bottom is 2025, the current proposal. We did, we did attempt to do that, to, you know, as I said, try to take the best of what was in the prior proposal and make it, first of all, feasible as a construction matter and also to be a little bit better of a blend with, with the, you know, the warm block next door, tried to, you know, make those look like they belong next to each other. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but we tried to do a little bit of both.
No, I mean, I understand, and I understand it's an undertaking for this project, it was just that the previous design, some of the windows and everything really kinda mirrored a little bit more of the downtown, but I fully understand that is an undertaking of this particular project.
And if I, if I made, I just backed up a little bit, it might get a little bit lost on the lower level in terms of what's a garage door, what's a window. There are a lot of windows here, you just might not be able to tell because of the dark color. I encourage them to put signs and all kinds of people in those windows, but we can only get so much out of the rendering. But there is a lot of, it will be an active front beyond just the garage doors and utility doors. The dominant, dominance along Main Street is going to be both the retail and then the parts of the lobby and bike area that you can see and see the activity of the residents.
No, I think the bottom part with the 163, that blends in pretty well, I was more concerned of above the 163, considering the other previous architectural design. But thank you, Attorney Falk. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Irish. Council Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think my voice travels, I probably don't even need the microphone. I have a question related to the units. You said there's studios and one-bedrooms. I heard you just say two-bedrooms. Do we have any two-bedrooms?
Yep, so, let me just get the number for you. So, it is, backing up, 31 two-bedroom and then 36 of both one-bedroom and studio. I think we have four or five studios total. So, it's about, about half-two-bed and about half-one-bed, roughly.
And on the discussion where you showed these money savings, non-school cost, did you, are you going to have a limit that nobody can have schoolchildren in this building?
Through the President, we can't do that.
I didn't think so.
Right.
But you presented it that way.
What we're anticipating is the same.
Anticipate, okay.
We anticipate the same trend that we've seen with many of the other projects that were mentioned tonight. The data that I've seen from the school department shows a very low number of children. Someone mentioned you can't guarantee there will be no children, that's true, we can't. But 67 units right downtown with limited amenities will, based on all projections that we've seen just in Marlboro, not just in other places in terms of this kind of product, will have a very low number of children, if, if any.
Well, with the two-bedrooms, there's that opportunity. I go by Hosman Street and get stuck there for 15 minutes seeing children going off buses to the apartments that are two-bedrooms. So, that doesn't sell to me that there won't be schoolchildren in here. I believe there will be and there will be costs for that and maybe not just a school, another schoolteacher. It's concerning, you know, especially with 31 two-bedroom units. But, again, that's my concern and I just want to make sure it was heard that there could be schoolchildren there. There's a building being built on Main Street right now and I continually get calls, I've been dealing with the local counselor on it, because there's no decency to the businesses that exist. Small businesses are being represented tonight, the chamber's here, and they continue to park and take spaces for the small businesses that need to operate. I'm going to be asking for a control measure for the people that build this building for parking, that they consider moving away from the site, because we're having that problem right now on the other end of Main Street. Not your building, but it's concerning and it could happen again. And I'd like to see during construction, a construction setup where we're not tying up Main Street all the time. And I'll be bringing that to the committees that review this, Urban Affairs, as well as our town, our city representatives. But that's concerning and it's already happened, not with you, but I don't want to see it happening again. We need control plans to prevent that. The other thing that I had a question on, a little easier, is are you going to have any electrical charging stations for the cars that will be parked at your location?
Yes, there will be. Do you have a number, Carlos? Just go around to the mic.
Yeah, I mean, by code, we are required to have, like, a certain amount of parking spaces with, like, electric chargers, like, in all the parking spaces there on the first floor are going to have electric chargers on it.
Do you know how many about?
I think, like, we have about 10 units over on the first floor.
Good. I'm happy to hear that news. I drive an electric car now, so I'm always trying to get a spot down in our back parking lot and it's not always available. There will be other discussions I will bring up at Urban Affairs as well as site plan, but the concern is, if it does get approved, traffic obviously was brought up, I brought it up earlier, that traffic's getting ridiculous in this city. But the other issue is parking. We can't ignore the fact that if you have a two-bedroom, there could be two adults living there needing two cars. So, now we're up to 62 cars with 31 two-bedrooms. We are not yet there for public transportation, it's unfortunate, but we're not there. We're not Boston, we're not Cambridge. So, where are they going to park? You know, and it's concerning and I just don't ask these questions of your present, a candidate for this property, it was asked for others as well. So, we'll hopefully get some answers when we see this in Urban Affairs as well as site plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Orem. Council Preciado.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being here, Mr. Falk. I do have a couple of questions, but I did want to follow up with Council Orem's sentiment about the schoolchildren and, you know, the ongoing strains that we're going to see on our emergency services if we do have these, these units open and available. I did actually want to know about these garage doors that are going to be at the lower level. Are they going to be automatic doors? Are there going to be any warning systems for pedestrians walking by? The people in this community are not used to that level of parking structure, that's more of an inner-city, big-city kind of deal. And it seems that we keep prioritizing vehicles over pedestrians in our beautiful, walkable city, especially our Main Street. So, if you can kind of expand on, on what that situation is going to be like.
Good, it's a good question and it's a question that came up in 2019 as well, because although we didn't have two levels of parking, we did still have garage doors that were going to be automatic. And so, the, the existing site plan decision from 2019 has fairly detailed condition in terms of what that system is going to be in terms of warnings to pedestrians, it's not automatic, it's controlled by the resident when they're coming and going. So, we have, we had that thought through and we've been talking about this slightly different system with the city engineer at a few different meetings now. So, he has been on top of that and so, we'll be making tweaks to that condition in the 2019 site plan approval. But those, those are good, good, good questions and concerns, it would be, you're right, it's a newer thing for Marlboro, though it is fairly common in, in other cities, it would be a newer thing for Marlboro, but we, we are aware of that and we'll definitely have those conditions in this permit.
Thank you. I also did have a question about your, your backyard for the back of the building. That giant retaining wall, are there any plans to do anything with that, improve it in any way or, I'm sure you're going to clear it somehow? And also that, the backyard, what is, do you know what the total, like, length of that is and the width? I, I know there's a square footage, but then.
I don't have the number at the tip of my tongue, but.
It just seems really, really tight back there.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get to the slide that shows you, that's another one. Oh, yeah. One more. There we go. So, that's, that's the, that's the lawn space.
Yeah.
So, the, part of the back of that would be the slope going up the hill, that would be landscaped, but the, the actual lawn area, I think Carlos said he thought it was about 5,000 square feet.
Do you know what that, what the depth is, though?
The depth? I don't have that. We'll, we'll get that for you. It's on the plans, I just, I just don't know it off the top of my head.
It just seems like very little usable green space for, for people out there if that's going to be majority slope up there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Preciado. Any other councilors? Council Pacello.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Attorney Falk. I appreciate tonight's presentation. Just a couple of quick questions regarding the draft special permit. Obviously, we don't have a copy yet, but you'd made reference to some of the changes that we'll be looking at, just to confirm. So, 70, 70 feet is the max, we're going to 75, so you're looking for relief there. Then also the lot lines, looking for relief, correct? And then, just lastly, the 98 square feet is still zoned for business, so we'll need relief for that as well.
That is correct. And then also in that 2019 special permit, we have relief for lot coverage. We don't show that on these plans because we've got that green space. It is fairly debatable because that is going to be over a building as to whether that counts as lot coverage or not. I mean, we think it's green space, it's lawn area, it is technically over a portion of the garage. So, we, all the same relief that was in the, in the 2019 permit we'd be asking for, except for, you know, the height coming down and some other calculations coming down.
No, I appreciate it, thank you. And I'm very much looking forward to reviewing this in Urban Affairs. It's important that we look at these kind of urban-centric, right, focusing on our downtown. We all campaign on it, now we're getting a chance to really look at something. So, I appreciate it. Thank you, Attorney Falk. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Pacello. Any other councilors? Question from the councilors, Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. For people who were not on the council or maybe didn't live in Marlboro at the time, I think you need to be aware that this project came after the city council did a major rezoning of downtown to develop the downtown Marlboro Village. And within that zoning, this building would have been allowed by right, except for the fact that they wanted to go higher than was allowed, so they need the special permit. We allowed many things by right in downtown that we then changed later on. One of the other parts of the conversation that we had with many residents and many business people was this, the look of this building was one of the things that everybody said fit on Main Street. It is pictured in the design review guidelines, there are multiple pictures of what the public said would work downtown, and this is one of them that was a sample of what would fit. So, I just wanted to bring that out without going through a lot. I guess my question, were some of the ones that were already asked, but I want to talk about the stairway, because currently you can walk up that stairway all the way to McAniel Street behind. You'll still be able to do that, it will be public. It seems like it's, the, in the picture, the two buildings look closer than they ever were before, so it's, seems like it's going to be not as open and pretty-looking. You can also, will you be able to stop like you could before to look down on the backside of that building when there was a building there and the, the property?
Yes, you would be able to. You're right, the stairs are a little narrower than the kind of switchback system that is going on right now. So, there will be a redesign, the buildings, I mean, there's no building there now, the new building won't be any closer than the prior proposal, it's, it's the same. And there will be a landing that provides egress for both our building and the, and the locker, the walker block as well. So, the stairs will be both for the public to go from Devens to Main Street and also for egress for both of those two buildings. They'll retain that and it'll still be open to the public and, you know, city property.
And the, the public will not be able to use those stairs then get into the back green space behind the building, or is there separate private access to that?
Yeah, that green space is for the residents, that's, that's no different than someone's backyard. So, it would be accessible for the residents from the stair area, that's how you get into it, but it's not to the public.
So, there'll be a separate gated?
Correct.
Entry for them? Okay. I think that is all of my questions. I know you were at site plan on Thursday, hopefully things will move along. I know they did have some concerns at prior site plan meetings. Once they get us their final comments, I guess we'll be ready to go for Urban Affairs and see where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Roby. Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Any questions from the councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing and this is in Urban Affairs.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number five.
Now's the time for the public hearing on the resubmission of a proposed zoning ordinance amendment, Chapter 650 zoning, to add a new section that would create the Ames Village Overlay District, Order Number 25-100, 9553.
Okay, this public hearing will be taken up in the same four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And then, fourth, questions from the city council. And comments will be limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address before speaking. With that, Attorney Falk.
Thank you, President Austin, councilors. Again, for the record, Attorney Brian Falk from Myrick 100 Front Street in Worcester, here on behalf of the petitioner Marlboro Northborough Land Realty Trust, which is an affiliate of Gutierrez Company. Here with me tonight is Scott Weiss from the Gutierrez Company. This may seem very familiar, it should because the council last had this before them in September. This is a petition for a zoning amendment to add a new overlay district known as the Ames Village Overlay District on the 11 acres at the corner of Ames and Forest Streets. When we were before you last, we had a favorable recommendation from the Urban Affairs and Housing Committee and a favorable recommendation from the Planning Board, but we weren't able to clear the council's procedural steps within the required 90 days. So, the council didn't take action in 90 days, the zoning amendment didn't take effect and so, we were able to refile because we had a favorable recommendation from the Planning Board, we weren't subject to a two-year prohibition. So, we're back before you and we have to redo everything. We had our planning board hearing tonight at 7:00 and now we're, we're having this hearing. So just moving through, this is a vacant site in the A3 residential zoning district. Site is, we think, is a transitional area between Avalon multifamily community to the south, some commercial industrial uses to the west, and high in our mind is the single-family homes to the north. As an A3, and this, this area will give you a little bit better sense of what I was talking about, the site being sort of a transition between more intensive commercial uses to the west, intensive multifamily uses to the south, and then single-family homes to the, to the north, you can see there. It's an A3 property, which means that, for the most part, the only thing you can do is single-family homes. There are a few other uses, but for the most part, A3 is for single-family homes. This, this graphic gives you a sense of what A3 zoning does on this property. There were a number of subdivisions proposed for this property over the years, most recently a 21-lot subdivision. That subdivision has lapsed, so if there was ever to be done, you have to go back before the Planning Board. But this is roughly what a 21-lot subdivision under A3 zoning would look like at that property. And then this is what we're looking to do with the overlay districts. We would have our development concentrated along Ames Street and Forest Street, leaving that existing vegetated buffer that shields the single-family homes from these more intensive uses I described, giving them that green space and that green buffer. This is the only additional use that this overlay district would allow. This isn't an overlay district with a laundry list of other uses. It's a single-use overlay district. You take advantage of the overlay district to do multifamily by special permit, or you don't, and you just go with A3. So there's definitely a clear either-or for the council, which is not always the case with zoning amendments that come, come through here. So I'm going to turn now to Scott Weiss from Gutierrez, who's going to tell you a little bit about the project and some of the financial impacts, and then some of his discussions with neighbors before we came forward with this petition. Scott?
Thank you, Brian. Again, for the record, Scott Weiss with the Gutierrez Company. So thank you again for your time this evening. As Attorney Falk indicated, what we're proposing here are condos, for-sale ownership condos, what we call age-targeted. We've done this product in other locations that are geared towards primarily empty nesters, people who maybe want to downsize from their existing home, stay in the area, keep, keep a, a home in Marlboro. As part of that, we propose very limited amenities within the, within the building and the development, so that it keeps condo fees down, so the, the cost of ownership can, can be more, more attainable. So with that, if we skip to the next one, we did have financial projections for this as well. And as compared to the single-family housing development, it is very much net positive revenue, tax revenue to the city. The project would generate in excess nearly $450,000 as compared to single-family homes. It's, it's over $500,000 better for the city in terms of economics, to the point of, can we guarantee that there will be no children in this development? No, we cannot. We have experience in this type of product in other locations where there are no children. It just does not appeal as a price point, as, as the type of units and what's available. That, that's been the experience. However, even if there were a number of children in this, in this development that is consistent with, or even higher than some of the other sort of multifamily developments within the community, this would still be a net revenue positive development to the city as, as compared to the single-family housing units. So moving on to the next slide, and I know we've, we've talked about this before. This proposal, the site has been before the city as the single-family subdivision, a number of times it's been before you previously. We did spend a, a fair amount of time working with the neighborhood, getting feedback both from the Planning Board in their prior reviews, and we modified the proposal to what you see here today. We've reduced the size by 25%. We've consolidated the building footprint from three buildings to two buildings. We've moved the buildings closer to, to Ames and Forest Street, thereby preserving the larger buffer zone in the back of the site. In fact, the Planning Board earlier this evening asked about the idea of solidifying that within this, this zoning language to assure that those buildings would be within a specified distance from those streets, Ames and Forest, and we have no reservations or no concerns about doing that. And then the site is on a hill, and we're putting the buildings on the sort of low side of the property, so we use the hill as a further buffer to the adjacent homes to the north. And lastly, we're proposing to restrict the Forest Street exit. As you know, as you may see, there's an entrance and exit off of Ames and Forest, and restrict the Forest Street exit to a right turn only. And with that, I'll turn it back to Attorney Falk.
Thanks, Scott. This is a rendering, a little bit of what some of the buildings might look like. And I just wanted to leave on this one, because I think it helps explain why we're doing what we're doing. So some of the specifics of the zoning were capped at 90 units. That's the maximum number that we could have in the district. So it's not a question of how dense is this going to be? The maximum is 90 units. That's, will be right in the zoning. This would require both a special permit from the council and then formal site plan approval. So we're at the very beginning of the, of the process, high-level zoning. Can we do the multifamily use and what will be the basic rules? And then at the next step, we would go into special permit, and then later to site plan approval. In terms of the, the buffers that we were talking about, so the zoning specifies that there has to be a 50-foot vegetated buffer all along the perimeter of the property excluding Forest and Ames Street. So everywhere that you see lot line that's not Forest and Ames Street, we'd have a minimum 50-foot vegetated buffer. We also have a, we have to require to have in the zoning four acres towards the back adjacent to the single-family homes, four acres left in natural, undisturbed condition. And then beyond that, we have a 50% maximum lot coverage. So we're looking at five and a half of these 11 acres actually having structures on them, and of the five and a half acres, at least four have to be left completely alone in their natural, natural state. The contrast that you see on the right is what A3 zoning would do with 30-foot rear setbacks, 15-foot side setbacks, and no requirement to maintain the existing woods. So even though the lot coverage might be the same, that lot coverage is spread out along all of these different parcels, and there's no obligation to maintain the vegetated buffer versus what we're proposing, which is to push it closer to Forest and Ames and leave that open green area undisturbed. We also have a provision in the zoning to clarify that we have to comply with soil management techniques for formal apple orchard properties, which this is one, and that's going to be right in the zoning as well. So that concludes our formal presentation. We appreciate your time. Look forward to your questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Attorney Falk. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any members that, please come on up and get, you can form a line, but go ahead.
Hello? I'm Margaret Sawyer. I live at 33 Teller Street. I bought this property, so the small little V at the top of that picture where the forest is, is where I live. I've been dealing with this for 20 years. When they tried to do the homes before, it was a fiasco, as most of you from the city that were there at the time has heard me before. This is the best plan for the condos. It gives, keeps the integrity of the neighborhood. It has green space for the animals, and it actually helps with the noise. There's a lot of noise around our neighborhood now with the fork kicks and everything else going on. So I think this would be the best plan, as long as they keep their acreage clear, we'd be good.
Thank you, Margaret.
Fred Meyer, 125 Sandini Road. I probably live the closest to what's going to be the four-story building there. It's not going to bother me. It's behind me. It's going to be quiet. We're the people that live here and have to deal with whatever we end up building here. We want it quiet. If we put 23 houses in there, it's not going to be quiet. The proposal has been modified many times. 99% of the people like the townhouses and don't want regular houses. We don't want walkways behind our houses. Leave it natural for the animals. They don't have much land left as it is. Less noise for the neighborhood, no playground, no playground equipment. I hear the car alarms from Avalon above me. I hear fork kicks, which is up over the hill, the, the whistles, the screaming, the yelling all the time. This is definitely the best proposal that we have for the land. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beverly Burrows, and I live at 50 Teller Street. Mine is the dead end in back of Forkicks, so I've got a different opinion of this, a different view from this. And I'm in support of the condos, because I realize that they're going to be less invasive to me as far as being able to see the condos as, and I really appreciate the green space because once, if we take that away, we're not going to get it back. And we do have a lot of animals still running through the woods. Some things you'd be very surprised to know what we have in this state. And to lose that, to lose that would be just awful. So I really support the condos and keeping the green space. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly.
John Wilters, 50 Teller Street. I am in support of the condos because of the preservation of the green space that's there. I have two young kids, and I love being able to tell them, or would love being able to tell them that we got these, this land preserved for the future, for their futures. So I really would support the condos for this.
Thank you, John.
My name is John Sawyer. I'm at 33 Teller Street. I'd like to talk about the fact that this has been a 20-year project that the developers have been looking to build, and up until tonight, I've been completely opposed to it. But this is by far the best situation. It impacts the neighborhood the best possible way. You know, we've never been against a landowner, you know, wanting to do something with his land, but it was always about do it right for the, for the neighbors. And I think this is, I'd like to, for the council to consider that this is the best possible plan that I can, I could see. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Oh, we do have a correspondence.
Yes, council, the council did receive one communication from Kristen Larson of Five Caliber Drive in Marlboro, who stated she is in opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Kerrigan. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition?
Kirsten.
Kristen?
Kirsten, I apologize.
Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? I got to get through this three times. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Any questions from the councilorum?
I was hoping, I was hoping the ward councilor might want to speak first, but that's okay. In looking at the view of the buildings, they appear to be four stories, pretty high. And the question I would have is, has a balloon test been done so the neighbors can see what they're going to be looking at from their housing units?
You're correct that they're, they're four-story, it'd be a garage level and then four levels of residential above it. We have not done a balloon test. That's something the council is interested in. We could do that as part of the special permit.
Okay. And another question...
Sorry, Scott may have something else. I'm sorry.
If I, if I may, through the president, just in response, we did have some architects' renderings just showing blocking and massing and using the, in respect to the existing grades out there, so that we could compare what neighbors would see as a comparison between the single-family subdivision versus this proposal. So we did do those renderings and share them with the neighbors.
Were they able to see the height of the buildings in those renderings from their house, like a balloon test showed?
So i, in some cases, the built, the tops of the buildings are visible in, depending on which exact neighboring property you are from, but you could, you could tell and see the difference, yes.
And the other note I see in the drafts is the conventional housing shows green space. Do you have wetlands on that property where you need to protect the green space, especially at the end of the cul-de-sac?
No, we're not aware that there are any wetlands. Some of the blue that you see there, those are detention basins for stormwater, but it's not wetlands, no.
Okay. But is that going to be green space around that detention basin, that darker green versus the lighter green around the houses?
What you see there, it would be left in its natural state, so, so yes.
And that detention basin for the 90-unit facility, where are those detention basins?
So looking at the, just the, the prior single-family subdivision plan, the blue areas were the planned detention basins. Those were actually, construction had started, geez, it's probably 18 years ago now, or so construction had started on that, and those areas were graded out. For, while the full site hasn't been designed yet and the engineering fully done, there is the thought that one of those basins would continue to be used at the top left of the image that you see, which is mostly cleared today. It is a little bit overgrown, but it's not trees and the like in that area. That area would continue to be used, and the rest of the stormwater would be managed within and under the parking.
Under the parking, you said?
Within and under the parking, yes, that's correct.
And in fairness to the other applicant, I'll ask very similar questions. You say, you know, you're trying to build it so there will be no schoolchildren, but you also said there's no guarantee. How many bedrooms are you proposing for each condo? Are they a variety?
Two-bedroom.
One to two bed, they're all two-bedrooms? And how many parking spaces are you planning for 180, 180 bedrooms?
So the, the zoning that we, is in the overlay district is consistent with other multifamilies that have been done recently, so it's 1.5 per unit.
So 1.5 per unit, not per bedroom?
Correct.
Okay. So that comes down to, what, 140, 135 parking spaces? And the other question I had was in respect to parking, is it all outside or are you planning garages?
So it's a little bit of both. You see surface parking on that concept plan, we'll have that. And then underneath each building will be garage parking as well. So it's a little bit of both, and that, you know, the garage parking, in addition to being convenient for the, for the unit owners, also helps reduce the amount of built space because it's all self-contained under the building versus having more parking towards the back.
Back to the children. You say you're trying to build them out. Is it because you don't provide a playground? Is that why you're saying you don't attract children?
That is, that is part of it. I'll let Scott speak to it, but I can address a little bit. So age-targeted, it's the amenities that are put together. They're all two-bedroom. It's not designed to have the types of amenities that people would want to have kids at. There are condominiums and multifamilies that certainly have that. This would not be one of them. So the, the goal with this is a place for folks to downsize. Area residents don't have a lot of options to downsize, and someone who's been living in a single-family home for 40 years doesn't necessarily want to start being a tenant all over again. So this is a good option for them and one that we don't see much in the marketplace. So we call it age-targeted because we're not going through the somewhat onerous and difficult process of doing age-restricted, which makes it very difficult to buy and sell, quite honestly. But age-targeted in terms of the amenity mix, which in, in Scott's experience, seeing this product done elsewhere, has virtually no children. It just works out that way because it's not a place that people choose to raise children because it doesn't have the amenities that kids would, would tend to like. And we, and again, I mentioned at the, at the last hearing, data that I've seen from the Marlboro School Department shows newer multifamilies, both condo and rental, newer ones, ones built within the last five to 10 years, have very low number of children. Are there no children? No, there's, no one can guarantee that. But the number of children is very, very low, and markedly lower than you would have with single-family homes, where you can't guarantee, but you can all but guarantee that with a good, good school system, new single-family homes are going to have families with kids, and that the fiscal impact on the city is, is significant to the negative.
The question I have, too, is in these two-bedroom units. Obviously, as you said, you can't guarantee there won't be children, but what is the, I thought you had a slide that showed the average cost for these units? They're all two, they're all the same, right? Two-bedroom condos, all 90 of them?
They are. I'm just backing up. The, the projection there is on, this is all value to the city. This isn't necessarily the cost. This is the assessed value.
Assessed value, but that wouldn't be the cost of a condo.
No, assessed values are never exact to the cost.
So it's usually higher?
Depends.
No, I've mentioned way before you guys even thought of coming into Marlboro in the 90s, the issue always became, people are trying to downsize, sometimes they're just matching to go into a smaller facility, because their house sells maybe almost the same price as maybe what the market is. So that's concerning, that it may... So that's concerning that it may not be as readily available to the present residents. So it's concerning, and again, I brought it up in other projects as well, you know, back when they were building down on William Street. But that's, so that's just your assessed value determination to show the cost. And again, there's zero school cost. I would question that, but. And the other question I had, the easy one, is are you planning electrical charging stations?
Yes, per code now. I mean, anything new has to have electrical charging stations.
How many are you planning for this facility?
Do you know code on top of your head, Scott?
If you don't, don't worry.
I think it's 20%. New parking areas under the new code are 20%, I believe.
That would be a good amount. Okay, well, thank you for your answers, and I look forward to hearing more at Urban Affairs or wherever, Site Review. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Pressiato.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good for being here again, Mr. Fock. So originally, I was in full support of this project, the 90-unit condos, but I will admit, I was not thinking of the city as a whole. I was really focused on that neighborhood, and recently I've had lots of discussions with the residents, neighbors, and departments, and, you know, I feel as though the green space portion is great. It's amazing that, you know, developers willing to do this, but it also feels like it's kind of an easy way to sway public opinion because these condos will, they will affect our city, they'll affect our neighborhoods, our emergency services, our school systems. So I just want people to be aware of that, and I just wanted to make that point out because previously I had been in full support of this. But I do have one question about the parking situation. If it is one and a half per unit, are there any plans for overflow parking? Where would residents park if there are no parking spaces available in this property?
There aren't plans for it. I mean, that's, that's something that could come at the zoning level. We don't have that. I mean, it's something that the council could look at. You know, the 1.5 wasn't picked for maximum convenience for us to try to get just the right amount of parking. We want the right amount of parking. People aren't going to buy these units if they, if they can't get parking, but 1.5 per unit, we have found has been a good measure in the industry and not just, you know, around, in Marlborough. We have found that, you know, a lot of the new multifamilies and condos, 1.5 is more than enough parking per unit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council Pressiato. Council Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just also want to thank the residents for coming out and speaking as well. When this was before us, before I was in support, and I continue to be in support based on what my constituents have said, I just have one question. Because we went through this all before, have there been any changes or modifications from the previous plan we just voted on to this, or is this the same?
The, all, this slide deck you have seen has not changed other than the date, and the petition we filed, the change is that rather than filing the original petition, we filed the version that the city solicitor's office had blessed as being in final legal form. So that's the version we filed with this petition, which is the one that had some tweaks made by legal and through the review process.
Thank you, Attorney Fock. So basically, from my understanding, that is all of the work that we had already done in urban previously and based on discussion and has been put in proper legal format by our solicitor, that is what we would be looking at?
That's correct. We're essentially right back where we were in September.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Brown. Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation. So just for clarification of this, we're just going to be doing the special permit in this part of the process. Sorry, this is the zoning, right, not the special permit?
That's correct.
Once this gets approved, then you come back with the actual special permit.
Special permit to the council, and then after that, if we get a special permit, site plan approval by the site plan committee.
Right, right. So, you know, what you show here as a presentation is roughly a draft of what would be sent for the special permit, not the final, but, you know, what to expect more than anything else. So I just wanted to get that clarified. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Any other questions from the councilors? Council Robie?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Council Dusset. I was going to make that point once again, that this is a zoning change. It has nice pictures for what it could look like, but isn't a guarantee that that's what we'll see if we approve the zoning change. They'll come back with the special permit with the specificity of all the details. I don't have any questions. I know this, you did have your public hearing from the planning board this evening, which is why you were delayed, so as soon as we get their opinion, we can set up an urban affairs meeting and take this up again.
And if, just if I may, I can report from the planning board. They had the hearing tonight. They closed the hearing but didn't close the record. What they were looking to get back from us is, and Scott had mentioned this previously, they wanted to see, can we put in the zoning the maximum distance from Forest and Ames Street that the developed area can be? They were throwing out 200 feet. We think that might be fairly close. We couldn't commit to it because we haven't actually done it. We'll probably know that number tomorrow because this is not a difficult exercise. We just don't have it now. So the planning board was really looking just to get that number and build that into their recommendation. So they're going to take that up at their next meeting as soon as we have it. So as soon as their next meeting, we'll probably be ready to go.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Robie. Any other questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing, the entire public hearing, and this is in urban affairs. Residents, thank you very much for showing up this evening. If you're ready, let me know. Agenda item 15.
Minutes of boards, commissions, and committees.
Mr. President? Council Dusset.
Thank you much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the boards, commissions, and committees.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file all the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, the minutes are filed and the vote is 10-0. Reports of committees. Reports of committees. Reports of committees. Agenda item 16.
Order number 25-1009495, major elementary school feasibility study updates recommendation of the urban affairs committee is to file.
Council Robie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of the committee, which is to file.
Motion's made and seconded to file the committee's recommendation. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, motion carries, votes 10-0. I'll wait till you get your phone out. You ready? Agenda item 17.
Order number 25-1009497B, application for modification of a special permit from Rafael Aronov on behalf of Green Gold Group, Inc., to amend the hours of operation of the marijuana retail establishment located at 910 Boston Post Road East. The recommendation of the urban affairs committee is to approve as amended.
Council Robie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee, which is to approve.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the committee, which is to approve the amended special permit. I will ask the clerk to read the conditions, please.
The city council pursuant to its authority under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and the zoning ordinance of the city of Marlborough hereby grants the applicant an amendment to modify condition number eight of the original special permit as amended by the First Amendment to the special permit as follows. One, by deleting condition number eight in its entirety and inserting in its place the following. Eight hours, the maximum hours of operation of the use, shall be Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. All other conditions of the original special permit as amended by the First Amendment to the special permit shall continue in full force and effect and are incorporated by reference as part of this decision. And finally, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the applicant and its successors and/or assigns, at its expense, shall record this special permit in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds after the city clerk has certified that the 20-day period for appealing this special permit has elapsed when no appeal has been filed and before the applicant is applied to the building commissioner for a building permit. Upon recording, the applicant shall forthwith provide a copy of the recorded special permit to the city council's office, the building department, and the city solicitor's office.
Okay, you've heard the conditions. Is there any discussion on the conditions or the motion before us to approve the special permit? Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Council Pacillo?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Avan?
Yes.
Council Dusset?
Yes.
Council Orville?
Yes.
Council Vital?
Yes.
Council Pressiato?
Yes.
Council Ossing?
Yes.
Council Irish?
Yes.
Council Robie?
Yes.
And yes.
Motion to approve the amended special permit carries the vote of 10 in favor, none opposed. Council Avan?
Move to adjourn.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed, adjourned carries. We are adjourned at 9:29. Have a good evening, everyone.